Twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. The public can also access this meeting via WebEx technology. The meeting number is two, three, five, seven, two, oh, five, five, one, five, six. And the password is Tuesday. The Burlington School Committee will hear public comments in person and virtually. Meetings are also broadcast live on Burlington Cable Access TV or BCAT. And the video, audio recordings are being made. This meeting of the Burlington School Committee is being held in person at the School Committee Room in the Burlington Public Schools Central Office. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. If you are participating remotely, please identify yourself by typing your name on the screen in advance and verbally, once you are identified, to speak. We request you please turn on your camera. In-person and on-camera comments and statements are limited to three minutes. The equity statement for the Burlington Public Schools. Educational equity means that every child belongs and receives whatever support he, she, they need to develop their full academic, emotional, and social potential to learn and thrive every day. This begins with kindness and valuing the humanity of every child and individual. So now it's time for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is the approval of the warrant. I will entertain a motion to accept the warrant. Second. Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. That's five, zero, zero. Thank you. The next item is the approval of the meeting minutes from September twelfth. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. And that's five, zero, zero. Thank you. Is there anyone who's here tonight for public participation on a topic that's not on the agenda? Mr. Parsons, please come up and make sure the microphone is on. Thank you.
Hello? It's on. Hello. Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Edward Parsons, Town Meeting, Precinct Six, Ways and Means Committee, zoning bylaw review committee, and I have been on the Fox Hill School Building Committee since its inception in January of two thousand twenty-two. I am not speaking on behalf of any of these committees. We are currently in the feasibility study phase considering two options, to rebuild Fox Hill or to consolidate Fox Hill and Pine Glen. The consolidation is being considered because the school committee, the school district, and the town agreed to consider it in May of twenty twenty, twenty twenty. As it turns out, the consolidation is unpopular. In February of twenty twenty-two, the town and school district certified the MSBA enrollment number of three hundred and twenty-five students for Fox Hill. Fox Hill, as it stands today, serves four hundred and fifty students. Presumably, we made these compromises in the hope of securing money from MSBA. We've been engaged in a debate regarding the merits of a consolidated school, which would replace Pine Glen with a three hundred and twenty-student wing of a larger building. And that has become a distraction from a significant problem with both options. Both the larger and smaller options would shrink the Fox Hill School from four hundred and fifty students to three twenty to three twenty-five students. Part of Burlington's justification for requesting MSBA's involvement was overcrowding at Fox Hill. Both options leave a shortfall of at least one hundred and twenty-five students that would be, that would need to be moved to a different Burlington Elementary School. We do not have a design concept that accommodates our current enrollment and our stated goals. So ideally, we'd build a school with the capacity of the current Fox Hill School. That would not cause us to displace one hundred and twenty-five students from the new Fox Hill School. It would preserve four classrooms per grade and help maintain our smaller class sizes and withstand fluctuations in enrollment numbers. Cost estimates show substantial economies of scale in a larger school, and our estimates for the town's share of the three hundred and twenty-five-student Fox Hill is nearly eighty million dollars. So how do we justify such a large capital investment for a school designed for the smallest enrollment among our four elementary schools, occupying the largest plot of land among our four elementary school locations? Why would we plan a near miss of our target? Tomorrow night, when the School Building Committee provides Town Meeting with a report on our progress, I suspect members will be interested in a justification for the prospective expense. We're making some compromises, and we need to evaluate the value of those compromises versus the prospective MSBA reimbursement. I believe leaving unfinished business with a substantial first project among several now under consideration would be a mistake. And so I'm here to urge you to consider, for comparison, a third option, that of withdrawing from the MSBA process and building a four-classroom-per-grade school that would better serve the school district as a whole. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay. Is there anything else here tonight for public comment on an issue not on the agenda? Is there someone online who would like to see somebody raising his hand? If you could, if you could please state your name and then tell us your comment for three minutes. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. My name is David Cousins. I'm a parent of an elementary school child. I came tonight, or several time zones away, but calling in tonight to talk about the COVID-19 protocols which were sent out this past week. In short, for those who don't know, we're going back to more restrictive policies regarding COVID for the kids involving, up at the nurse's discretion, testing for cold symptoms. And then five to ten days quarantine, whether or not a child would choose to wear a mask, depending on a positive COVID test. So I think we need to agree on some things that, you know, agree on some facts. One, COVID is endemic, meaning it's not going away. It's going to be with us until the end of time, just like the common cold and the flu. You know, everyone, and then the second thing is, everyone has already had COVID or COVID vaccines or both by this time. It's been three years since COVID started. And at that time, of course, there were massive disruptions to school children's lives. And so I guess what I'm proposing is that if we assume that school is a benefit to children, then the threshold to disrupt school should be very high. I believe we should treat COVID as we do any other illness. It is a seasonal respiratory virus, and so it would fit the classification of the common cold, rhinovirus. And yeah, I mean, twenty-four hours fever-free, basically. So yeah, that's, that's my recommendation. I don't know if this is something that the school committee votes on or if it's handed down by an executive, but I think we need to change that policy, whether that means, you know, however, however that's, however that is done. So that's, that's my proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. We don't usually have a back and forth. I think Dr. Conti, do you have something to, to add?
Madam Chair.
I appreciate you, you sharing your, your thoughts, and certainly we will think about it, but Dr. Conti.
Mr. Cousins, I think this is a case where the CDC is lagging behind our practice. There is no policy, and our practices aren't going to change or get any more restrictive than they, than they have been. So we just published the, I think, what the Department of Public Health and CDC put out. I'm assuming they're going to be updating their policies to come in more in line with what, sort of with what your statement was tonight, but we are not planning on being any more restrictive than we've been the, the prior year.
Okay. So just to be clear, if a child does- A positive rapid antigen test, and then they stay home for five days. When they return to school, they'll be required to wear a mask or no?
I don't believe we're going to be requiring masks. I think nurses may- Recommend that. I will make sure there's a clarification published. I don't, I'm getting a little bit out over my skis, but I think that we are going to make sure that students are twenty-four hours fever-free, as you mentioned, before returning back to school. So again, I think, I think this is our, some of the agencies that are a little bit behind with their policy language than, than we are practicing currently.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you for making the time to come. Thank you. Is there anyone else in person or online who would like to participate at this point in the meeting? Okay. Oh, somebody else. Okay. Mr. Sinessi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Adam Sinessi, I'm a resident of Town Line Road and a precinct one town meeting member. I, I just heard what Mr. Parsons came to present, and it was sort of what I was driving at last week when we had the forum at the high school regarding the possibilities for the future of Fox Hill. And, you know, one of the points that I had brought up was that right now we're dealing with a homeless crisis that Burlington is being one of twenty-eight communities targeted for the number of hotel rooms that we have available, the state houses, homeless people. A lot of people have read the news recently. New York City is actually out of beds in their shelters for all of the people that have come into New York City. A lot of them are from out of the country, and we're starting, we've had seventeen new students come into the district this year. And I just think with the enrollment projections that we were given with, from MSBA before this all started, factors have changed, and I think it's worth building for the future as far as enrollment projections goes and leaving a little bit of breathing room in case, in case it's needed for various reasons. So I think that Mr. Parsons is on the right path to what I was sort of driving at last week from a different angle, but he's given us a reason that we want to, you know, leave a little room in the belt buckle, you know? Thank you.
Thank you for that. Is there anyone else online or in person who would like to participate in public comment? Okay. All right. Seeing none, we will move on to our next item, which is our student report from Mr. Shannon. Thank you for attending.
Thank you for having me. So hello. This year is already off to a great start for like pretty much all of us students. But as we get more into the year, extracurricular activities, which I talked about last time with the Activity Fair, have been getting more involved, especially with the community. So I just had a few things to talk about. First of all, DECA has prepared to send, I think, twenty students to a leadership conference in Austin, Texas, which I know is the agenda item. The cost is really high, and students are looking for any financial support, especially because this is such a great opportunity to go to a leadership conference and build leadership skills. And one way that DECA is looking to support is that they are partnering with True North this Thursday, September twenty-eighth, from six to eleven a.m., where I think ten to fifteen percent of all of the sales made will go back into our club. So they're looking for any Burlington community member who, you know, wants to get a coffee in the morning, just to support True North and support the DECA cause. And earlier today, I was actually talking with the editor of-
I'm sorry. I can't complete your request.
The editor of the student newspaper, and they are talking about preparing their fall issue. Which, sorry, which would be published later in the year. I know Ms. Eshelman actually is here. She's the advisor and the journalism teacher. Overall, all the fall sports teams are also excelling. I know that the girls volleyball team has been playing really well. The boys football team won their latest game. And shout out to the girls field hockey team because they had their senior night tonight, and I'm pretty sure they're doing pretty well. So yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Matthew, do you, are you encouraging the school committee to support the trip to, the DECA trip to Austin?
Yes. I am asking for support. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Brooks?
Mr. Shannon, could you just say the date and time again for the True North? I missed it.
Sure. It is Thursday, September twenty-eighth, from six to eleven a.m.
Thank you.
Yes, no? Any other comments? Ms. Monaco?
I think Siri wants to go with you.
I think Siri and all of Burlington should go support DECA at their fundraiser.
Yeah, good. Yeah, so I appreciate you sharing that with us, and I, I know there are other fundraisers from time to time, and please feel free to share other fundraisers, or not from time to time, probably always there's a fundraiser going on. Please feel free to share those with us because I personally, and I think we all want to try to support, but also then the, the word may get out to people who would otherwise not get the notice because they may not have a child in the district, et cetera. So thank you very much. All right. Thank you. Okay. Subcommittee reports. Is there anyone who has a subcommittee report tonight? No, no, no. Okay. None tonight. Mr. Moore, is there an update or a report from the Ways and Means Committee?
I believe Roger will bring something up during the later agenda item for the school committee, for the School Building Committee.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Are there some-
Sorry, this is Roger.
Roger.
It's just a brief note. There's nothing on the agenda, I think. All right.
I'm sorry. Could you say that again?
We had a, Ways and Means had a request for some more information about funding of the financial conditions under which the school buildings would be built. And I think it's too early, we don't have enough information prepared in a proper form to be able to do that tonight. And John Eiler, Chair of Ways and Means, suggested doing that, putting it on the agenda for the October tenth meeting. That's the only information I had to offer tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Know a lot of people have been asking about what is the plan for the bonding, for the funding, for the voting. All of those questions have been coming up, and so we appreciate, and we know that you folks are doing a lot of talking and thinking and planning. And so if you and Mr. Eiler can bring that to the school committee on our next meeting on the tenth, that would be great. Thank you. Any other?
Happy to do it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Ms. Dr. Conti, did you have something?
No, just another announcement.
Okay. Another, an announcement.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to recognize the passing of Charlie Lyons, the former superintendent and longtime colleague of mine from Shawsheen. Charlie's family has deep Burlington roots, deep Arlington roots. I remember one of the first meetings I had as superintendent, Charlie hosted at Shawsheen, and the names around the table were just incredible mentors to me, including Charlie himself. There was Maureen, Maureen LaCroix from Bedford, Chris McGrath from Tewksbury, Tony Sariel from Billerica, and Joanne Benton from Wilmington. So what a, just a powerful group of, of superintendents. And Charlie was a presence if you've ever had the pleasure of, of meeting him. And, and like I said, I, I felt like he was very generous with his time and answering my questions, and again, he was just a legend of, in, in, in my business, and he'll be sorely, sorely missed. And, and he was just a strong advocate for, for children and education in Massachusetts. So to Lyons' family, my deepest condolences. And again, they're, they're, they're spread throughout Burlington in, in our area, so I'm sorry about that.
Thank you for sharing that, and maybe we'll have a moment of silence for Mr. Charlie Lyons. Thank you. Other announce, did you have a comment about him? Go ahead, Ms. Monaco.
I, I wanted to mention that Charlie was a great guy, and his twin brother, Jack, served on this committee for quite a few years. And I just want to send the committee's condolences to Jack. It's pretty tough when your twin dies.
Thank you. Are there other announcements tonight that anyone would like to make? You thinking, Mr. Brooks? No? No? Okay. The only announcement I wanted to make is that I know that the, the school district had publicized that there was supposed to be a Diwali celebration on the Common on Sunday, and it was postponed due to the weather. So I'm, I'm sorry for them. I'm disappointed, and they have rescheduled it for next Sunday, October first, from two to six. And for anyone who's attended before, we know it's an amazing cultural event where people, many people who live in Burlington share their culture and background that's often different from people, other people like myself who've grown up in, in different settings, and there's dance, and there's music, and there's, sometimes there's street theater, there's sometimes art, rongoli, I think is what it's called. So there's so many things that you could do. It goes from two to six, and you certainly don't have to go the whole time, but I would encourage, there's going to be food there. I would encourage people, if you've been before, you know it's wonderful. If you haven't been before, I really encourage people to try to make it over to the Common next Sunday from two to, sometime from two to six. Thank you. Other announcements? No. Okay. Then next is learning, equity, and thriving. Dr. Conti?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The DECA advisors, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Truvey, are requesting approval for an out-of-state DECA trip to Austin, Texas for a leadership conference that takes place this November seventeenth through nineteenth. Again, the plan is to leave on Thursday, the sixteenth, and the conference starts the following day. There will be twenty students going with two teachers. The trip is self-funded by the students at the cost of approximately eight hundred dollars. The plan is to fly out of Logan to Austin and stay overnight at the DECA-designated hotels. Students will attend workshops during the day and participate in some sightseeing in the evening. Last year, students attended this power trip, DECA power trip in Washington, D.C., and they had an incredible experience, and they're excited to attend Austin this year. So my recommendation is that the committee approve the out-of-state DECA trip to Austin, Texas from November seventeenth through nineteenth.
So moved.
All right. Any further discussion? It's a great trip. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. That's five, zero, zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item is an out-of-state field trip for band chorus, guard, and orchestra students. Mr. Middleton, Middleton Cox is requesting school committee approval for the band chorus, guard, and orchestra students to attend the World Strides Heritage Festival from April tenth, tenth through fourteenth. And again, plans are being made at this time with the assistance of Burlington Performing Arts Parent Association, Mr. Tim Ketterer and Mrs. Julie Weller. Transportation, transportation would be a direct flight out of Logan to Orlando, Florida. The cost of the trip includes buses, hotel, performance onstage, clinic, recordings, awards, ceremonies, and a dinner, as well as park tickets for Disney World and Universal Studios. The total cost would be the responsibility of the individual students and their families. The parents association would provide many fundraising opportunities to help defray the cost to support families who are having financial hardship. The daily activities will be well structured and chaperoned. This is, I think, a regular trip of the band students, and it's my recommendation the committee approve the out-of-state field trip for band chorus, guard, and orchestra students to Orlando, Florida, and the World Strides Heritage Festival from April tenth through fourteenth.
Twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four.
We have a motion?
Second.
Okay. All those, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye. That's five, zero, zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've discussed with the committee many times the need for more clubs at the middle school level. Ms. Doctor Purchase, I'm sorry, is following through along with her talented staff. So this request came through Doctor Purchase as the contract requires. So Ms. Abby Lindberg, the, is proposing a drama club at Marshall Simons Middle School. The number of students would be twenty to thirty, and it can run with as few as four students and as many as fifty, based on an inventory of middle-aged plays available online. While we'd be able to fundraise to financially support the drama club and producing plays, funding through the district would also be needed. The budget for the drama club would need to include the following expenses: supervisor stipend, licensing fees for the plays and scripts. Again, Doctor Purchase is working all that, but she wants to establish a stipend to get the club going. It's recommended, my recommendation, the school committee approve the proposed stipend for the Marshall Simons Middle School Drama Club. And it's really, again, a two- or three-year on-ramp, as you all know from the contract.
So moved.
Any discussion? I just wanted to be clear, we're approving the stipend, and Doctor Purchase is arranging for the other costs-
Yeah.
-through her budget. Thank you. Ms. Masardo?
I would just like to say, I think this is really going to be an awesome addition to the middle school. I really support it. I think a play has a little something for everyone, right? Folks in the back, folks in the front. It's a real learning experience. I have friends from some of the plays I did in high school. I know the high school here has a really good program, so the more we build the bench at the middle school, it'll just strengthen the theater program, and I know that's well regarded in this town, so I really am excited to see this.
Mr. Brooks?
Definitely in favor as well. I just wanted to ask one question for clarification. The funding source will be out of the Marshall Simons O and M budgets, their operation and maintenance budget. Are we taking money from another line of accounting?
I'm actually not really sure yet. I think we're establishing the stipend. I think we want to get it in, there's sort of a, what is it, a three-year? Starts at five hundred dollars, goes to seven fifty, and then we'll place it on the stipend scale for the, for the teacher, and then I'm assuming she'll put together a budget, and Doctor Purchase will see sort of what those needs are. If there's something she can provide, she'll do it. If she needs some additional assistance, we'll, we'll make it work.
Okay.
Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none. Do we have a motion on the floor?
Yes.
We did. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye. That's five, zero, zero. And thank you to, I forgot her name already, Ms. Lindberg, for starting this program. It is, does sound wonderful. All right. Dr. Conti?
Thank you, Madam Chair. What you had in your packet was a request for an additional position to be added to the district outside of the, the budget. This position is a, it's a bilingual family and community engagement social worker. As was noted earlier with one of the public comments, all districts have had a homeless liaison that we've had to coordinate services oftentimes if families find themselves in a homeless situation. I think typically in Burlington, we would be assisting individual families, two or three families, and not sort of having to do that every year. We currently have about thirty to fifty homeless students in the district. It requires much more time than just a few students. There are, has typically been language needs. These aren't just students that have been placed by the state in Burlington hotels. It's important for me to stress that. They make up maybe about half of that population, but the homeless population are also families that have been displaced and are bunking up with, with other, with other families. That is part of the definition of being homeless from the McKinney-Vento from a student perspective. And we also have Burlington families that are finding themselves in a homeless situation as well. So while the state is applying some additional homeless pressure, everyone reads the newspapers, I don't want to, I want to make sure that I say that the problem or this, this issue is larger than that for us, for us here. One of the things this liaison would do is to make sure that services are provided, registration can occur. One of the things that we are missing that we're learning is to make sure that we can, at the time the family shows up, get immunization information as much as we can, because having to chase that information down once the school year starts is very time-consuming. And having my staff that have full-time jobs out in the community trying to get parental permission, even with the great support from the Board of Health, has been, again, has been, again, very time-consuming. Well, this is, again, a new position added to the budget. We do have some ESER funds Nicole looked that we could allocate. Obviously, we would look to then move this position into the operating budget for the next fiscal year, but we would get through this year using the the ESER funds moving forward. And again, I just want to make sure that I state just the incredible support from the Board of Health. I know, Dr. Chen, you met with Susan Luminello last week, and they're going to be vaccinating approximately?
They're going to be vaccinating approximately 50 students, and they'll be here for three days. And in addition to that, because some of these students, we don't know how, what vaccinations they will need. She's also offered another day sometime in November for us to finish those, the vaccinations. And at the same time, Barbara Conley, our nurse leader, is working and putting together a schedule that's going to be work in conjunction with Susan Luminello for our elementary and middle school students. But she's absolutely fantastic.
So the 50 are just high schools? So we have to work our way, work our way down. And again, having a a social worker, working with his families, welcoming them in, and getting all of the, getting them all prepared to be in school, I think would be, is is really important for us. So, and again, so I think this was a, our student population is changing very quickly in a very short amount of time, and we we need to make some adjustments in our staffing to to meet the need. So I'm requesting the school committee approve, again, this additional position. The funding source would be the ESER III funds that we have for the remainder of this fiscal year. And the job description was in your packet.
Yes. Are there questions or comments on this? I am very much in support. I have a question about, and I know job descriptions vary somewhat, but I, it's very clear, we need somebody who's bilingual. But I also wanted to be sure that it was clear that this person would be working with Burlington families who were, you know, homeless, or and and native English-speaking families who were homeless, and not just the the families in the hotels. That's sort of what's put us over the sort of capacity, I think. But is that what you, when I read it, I wasn't clear that that was, that a person applying for this job would, I want to make sure when we hire someone, they know that's part of their job.
Would certainly like to invite Ms. Chrissy Concepcion up, Christine Concepcion, I'm sorry, our Director of Mental Health. Madam Chair, what I would say is, is we don't make the distinction where where the person is from. We, the homeless is the sort of is the category. This person would work with any of our homeless families and hopefully help transition them and help them seek out even housing opportunities, because Ms. Concepcion does a lot of that work now, or has her staff working on a lot of that work now. So I don't want to describe something. But this this position would be working with any family that that needed support in terms of housing and adjustments for to to have the kids in school.
Yes, absolutely, any family. So any homeless family, multilingual family, disadvantaged family who is needing additional supports, both at the local level, and we're also obviously working with with state agencies to help these families with support as well.
Thank you. I I just wanted to be clear about that. Are there other questions or concerns or comments?
While you're sitting here, do we think this is going to be hard to fill? That's, I may only.
We're going to try our best.
Okay.
I don't know, I, you know, I think we're we're going to post and see what we can possibly get and what our applicant pool is like. But I don't know if I can answer that until we've posted it.
Good luck. I hope you can.
Thank you.
I also wanted to add, for people who are listening and aren't as familiar, but we've referred to some, just McKinney Vento, and we keep saying the McKinney Vento liaison. And McKinney Vento is a law, a state law, Massachusetts state law, regarding support services for the children of families who are homeless and guaranteeing them educational services and educational rights. And so we keep, we use a shorthand, and we call them McKinney Vento. And I wanted to just be clear for people who might be listening that this is a state law, and we, it's called the McKinney Vento law. So just wanted to add that. Do I have a motion to accept this position? Any, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The chair votes aye, that's 5-0-0. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. And Dr. Conti?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think, as Ms. Masardo said, I'm hoping we all have a great pool of candidates to to choose from. Next item is a brief MCAS statement. You'll be getting a much more in-depth MCAS presentation in October, as you typically do. We're thinking right now the timing will be the second meeting in October. So just for your, I want to put a little tease out there, because you'll be very excited to hear about it. Two of our schools did make the state's list the warning list, and I just wanted to make sure I explained that to the school committee, so Burlington High School and Fox Hill School. We made the list not for a performance issue, so let me say that again. We made that list not for a performance issue during the pandemic. Part of the state's accountability system is, participation is one of the factors that they look for. You need to have 95% of your students participate in the state testing. If you fell below that 95%, that puts you on the state's list. So at the high school, our Hispanic EL population participation was below the 95%. We have talked about the importance of getting those kids to school. We've created an alternative day program. We've had these conversations. And so that one group of students falling below the participation rate made the high school fall on the state's list. Again, the performance on MCAS was was not the problem. Fox Hill was a different, they're called subgroups. I don't like that term, but that's what the term is. It was our children with disabilities participation, and we have many parents who don't want their students to participate in the state test. There is no opt-out. We can't offer an opt-out, but some parents just don't want their children to participate. And if there's a significant number of those students who don't participate, we fall below our participation number, and that is, we we can't make our, that impacts our accountability for that particular school. Again, the score is the, the performance on the MCAS is not the issue. I'll say that again, the performance on the MCAS isn't the issue. It's the participation of some groups of students that caused both of those schools to make the list. And and so I just wanted to make that announcement. Dr. Chen will be presenting with the staff in terms of much more detail, and looking at our growth measures, looking at the performance of different groups and some of our achievement gaps as we as we have moving forward. Again, the teaser for the end of October.
Thank you. Dr. Conti? Yeah, Ms. Masardo?
What does it mean? What intervention do, does the state, because they're identified as needing intervention? So what, what is, we're on the list, so what does that mean for those schools?
We'll just have to probably submit a plan of how we're going to address participation. So I think we've already have a plan in place for the high school. Again, for, we can just encourage parents to have their children participate and maybe educate people of the consequences if they if they don't. And so it's just one of those things where the formula doesn't work if students don't participate.
Mr. Brooks?
Dr. Conti, if I could pull on thread a little bit. So you said the alternative day program has been in place for about a year now?
No, we just started this fall. So it's been in.
I was just going to ask, if there's any metrics, because if it's this fall, it doesn't, probably isn't any. And then what happens if we have continued low participation? Does the state take any action? Is there repercussions, anything like that?
Again, they might send some people out. But again, we'll we'll work with them, and I think we'll use the resources that we have. And we are planning on giving you an update on the alternative day program sometime in January. We didn't want to do it too soon. But we'll we'll have some data for you to look at. Again, attendance data, other things that we were trying to remedy by creating the program. So I think the the early indications are, it's it's been successful. Students are showing up. We now, we have to get them through the state test and generate some diplomas. So I think that's that's the goal there. So, yeah, we'll talk about that.
If I could interject, I spoke to the teachers from the Day Academy. At the end of the first week, they had 100% attendance. And I know it's not still 100% attendance, but they, it's been successful. The kids seem to be engaged. And there's one to three students who might actually be able to graduate even before June if they, you know, continue with this process. So there's a lot of great stuff. And I want to thank again whoever thought of the Day Academy, and I think there were a few people with Dr. Conti who thought of that. Yes, Ms. Monaco?
Just a couple of comments. I I know over the past, past at least two years, maybe, maybe a little longer, I've noticed parents saying that they don't want their kids to take the test. And I think there's sort of a feeling that the, some of the parents don't believe in the testing, the state testing, that it's of value. And so maybe what we need to do is explain all of this. You know, that A, there is a value, and B, it does reflect poorly on the district when we don't have enough of our students taking the tests. So I I think maybe we have a little work to do in explaining it to the parents. And then the other piece, which is part statement and part question, is we have students who cannot take the test. They're just not capable of taking the test. And does that count against us when those students don't take it?
The state does allow for an alternative assessment, so students don't have to sit and take the test. It's very time-intensive, there's a portfolio. So many of the students that you're referring to would have their, have a portfolio submitted to the state instead of having to sit through the, through the test. Those are individualized. The state typically caps the number of students who can take the MCAS that way, but we can usually appeal, and we usually win that appeal, because the state assumes that the students in that population are evenly distributed across every town, and that's just kind of a, not a valid assumption. So so I think we have many students who are are participating in the state assessments using a portfolio and not sitting down for a test. In regards to the value of the test or the state's accountability system, I can certainly educate people on what it is, but it's largely a measure of adults. It's not an assessment that's designed to compare communities. It's 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 really the state's way of ensuring that we're delivering state content is the standards, is sort of what it is. And so I think there's going to be a ballot initiative that's going to be questioning the state's accountability system that's coming up. So it's going to be a topic that many people are going to be, sure, have a position on and take sides. All I wanted to stress today is, if someone saw that list and you got a call about how poor our MCAS scores are, that's not the reason we made the list. The reason we didn't make the list, again, are participation rates of certain groups of students that also count to put you on the, on on that list. That's all.
Any other questions? I I want to also comment that I know a lot of people do track the scores of the district and and look at the ratings that get published and things like that. And and it is something that we do take seriously. And I'm looking forward to hearing the report when, after we have a chance to look through the data and have Dr. Chen report on it. And we can look at what there, what things we can be doing differently, and in what areas are we doing well, and that kind of thing. So I'm glad that we have that, this opportunity. So Dr. Conti, the next item?
Again, this is more informational. I was asked for elementary enrollment. You typically get that, but I don't break it out by class. And so that was asked for a little bit more detail. So I have paper copies if people wanted to see that, but that was also in your packet. And that was, again, essentially the class size average district-wide and by school and by sort of grade. So you get to see all of it. Sure, you can see them if, I think you all have it anyway, but just in case you want to see it. So that was informational. If you like this format, we can continue to provide this format as enrollments go up or down. When we're looking at staffing levels through the budget process, that's when sort of this level of detail is is one of the things that we are, we're looking at.
Ms. Masardo?
I had just got a question that at one point in time, I think enrollment numbers were available on our website, on the BPS website. Was that, is that supposed to be the case?
I'm not sure it's supposed to be. We can, we can put our enrollment up. I I'm just trying to think, it has to be in a way that's accessible, but we can certainly.
I had just got asked, the parents, that they used to pull it right off of the district website, be it monthly or yearly. And I know Lauren's been doing a ton of work on the website, all good. So I didn't know if this was something, and I know that we've, we might have changed systems too. So I didn't know if if we wanted some of that on just the regular BPS website versus DUCI, et cetera.
Yeah, and one of the things that we'll sort of maybe have an agenda item on at some point is we are part of a class action suit from a Office of Civil Rights complaint about the accessibility of the information on our website. So we're one of many districts across the country. And one of the challenges are, posting a PDF document does not make it accessible. So there is lots of content on our website that we actually had to take down. So we have to make sure that we put it up in a way that everyone can can sort of read it or or use it in terms of, if there's a speech to, text-to-speech application or something like that. So I think a lot of the work Lauren is doing is trying to reformat a lot of that information. I'm not sure if that was the reason this was taken down, but it's no longer as simple as, you know, why can't you just take this and throw it up on the website as a PDF? As we're, we're not allowed to do that anymore. So we have to figure out a way to do it that is, again, more accessible. Google Docs, again, not accessible. So we're really trying to explore ways of getting as much content as we can and as 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 accessible, as accessible as possible to everybody. So it's one of those challenges we have, but we'll make it work. And if people are interested in the enrollment data, I think, is that what you're saying? We'll find a way to make sure people have it?
Yeah, and I know Lauren's been doing a lot, and this is not a dig on the website by any stretch. I just know at one point, they said it used to be there. I didn't, I never found it on the website. So if it's our intention to put it on the website, then, and it's on the list of things to do, that's totally fine.
Okay.
Any further comments? Yes, Ms. Monaco?
How often do you update, you know, the numbers? Like, if it was on the website, would you use the October 1st numbers, which is generally the standard? It seems like those numbers change, so what you would find on the website might not actually be totally accurate.
Through the chair, October 1st is really important for a lot of the state reporting that we do and for our Chapter 70 funding, so that's a critical date. I usually look at it every month, because things change so much more frequently here. And if, Robin, Ms. Milliano in the Student Information Office sees a spike or something, then she'll come down. It could be, she might say, you might want to see this, you might want to see this. So she's probably looking at it, you know, every couple of days. So, but usually I get a monthly enrollment. And again, I can certainly share that or make part of the packet, or we can figure out some way to get that information up there. But that's, so a lot of different things. But I'm not sure you all need to see it as frequently as I do. But if you're interested, it's it's not, it's not top-secret information. We can make it available.
Yes, Ms. Monaco?
One other question, as I look at these numbers, I think about MSBA and their, their idea that enrollments will drop. And if they were to look at these numbers, they'd say, well, you've only got 14, 15, 15. They would have recommended 23. But, so they see a lot of holes here where we could have more children in each of these schools, except Fox Hill, pretty much. Is that what they do when they decide how much you need, how much space you need?
Yes, that's what they do across the Commonwealth, but that's why our, when we went back to the MSBA, we really asked them to consider our practice of having classes of 18 to 1. And they they did make that compromise for us. So that was the, that was a significant compromise that allowed for a fourth, a fourth school option, I guess, is, I'm not sure how to, the the smaller Fox Hill option. Because what surprised me is when they looked at the 23 students, which is what they apply typically across the state, they don't just look at the school that they're building. They would look at your capacity across the entire district, and they'd place 23 students at Memorial, Francis Wyman, and. Pine Glen. And that's, that's sort of when, when the capacity of our district was much higher than, than we typically practice. So I think that's, that's why having that conversation and having them work with us, I think, was a very important compromise. And, and I think that's sort of why they did that. It's not just the numbers, though. I, I just want to make sure the characteristics of our student body are changing, and we have to be very mindful of that as well. The diversity that's being added is, is wonderful. One in four of our students now are English learners or multilingual students. That doesn't mean they all receive services, because that's why we have to assess all of them when they come in. Some are very proficient in, in English, but they speak two or three languages, and they don't need some support. But one in four of our students is, speaks a, a language other than English in, in the home. About 20% of our students, one in five, are now identified as on free and reduced lines. So they're needing of financial assistance when we plan things and look at things. That's a characteristic that has changed over time. And we've had a conversation about how our most frequently spoken languages have shifted in certainly the 15 years I've been here, where Gujarati used to be our second most frequently spoken language. Now has been replaced by Spanish, followed by Portuguese in, in town. So again, we are having to make adjustments in terms of our programming. It's nothing which you've been very generous to support. So it's really a couple of factors. Again, it's the, it's the absolute numbers, and it's also then the, the makeup of the students in, in those numbers that we are, we're paying attention to.
Any further questions? Mr. Brooks?
Sorry, I just want to take a step back. So we were talking about putting these up and how they need to be translated. Is the current district's translation services not adequate to do that? Because most everything we get, you know, notification-wise has about 12 or 15 languages already translated to. So is that not adequate, or just not up to speed to do it and, you know, the speed that we need to process information?
Bob, can you help? I'm a little bit out of my depth. I just know that Google Translate is something that's, we can use. I just know that in speaking with Lauren, PDF is not something, are you part of those meetings? PDFs are not something that we can, that is-
So it's not translation, it's accessibility with the format being-
Yeah. So I think, through the chair, if you don't mind. So I think we're having two separate conversations right here. So we have a new program called Parent Square. We're sending a lot of communication out, and there's some translation going on there. Our website does have translation services through, through Google Translation, yes. But what we're talking about with this, when you put a PDF, especially a PDF that has multiple cells such as a spreadsheet, then what happens is when you have accessibility readers, we can't necessarily translate those lines. When we say translate, not English to another foreign language, but really translate the content on that PDF into accessible reading. So that's why we're making a separate conversation into a later upgrade of our website. But that's not currently what we have in place.
No, that answers it. Sorry, I didn't-
Yeah, no, it's fine.
And I, my question, Mr. Kuna, it's my understanding that to some extent, these two needs to make our content and our communications accessible to our, all of our families. On one hand, it's a language issue, and the translations address that. On the other hand, it's visual or, or other accessibility. So there's two different, and that often the solution to one is not available for the other. Is that accurate? So that's part of why I think that it hasn't been figured out just yet. They're still working on it. Is that accurate?
I think, again, through the chair, it is very accurate. But I think a statement for me would be some older content that we have now, modernizing that is, is something that we're working with the website, and Lauren is doing. New content that is going out, we're prioritizing through Parent Square. So that is accessible and translatable as new content.
So if I could clarify, so Parent Square makes things translatable and also accessible to various special needs software?
Again, it can. We're, we're providing that information through that content. So again, if we were to put a PDF up through Parent Square and distribute that, we still would run into that same issue. So you're seeing a lot more text-based and a lot more translation-based through Parent Square communication.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just the last thing before we get to Dr. Chen and the Journey to Cares. This is a, just again, an announcement. We had our final meeting with the Equity Auditor last Thursday. She had all the information. She needed some information in regards to our special ed programming and our multilingual programming. Ms. Chicalini and Ms. Lamprey participated. I have not received the final report yet. So that's why you haven't seen it. My plan is to, I'm hoping, I keep hoping, I keep, she, we're going to get that final report in time for the October 10th meeting. So that's the plan. So I'm not holding back the report. I haven't had it. I'm not sitting on it. We are working closely with the auditor and making sure that she has all the information she needs. And I'm hoping in the next few days, we'll, we'll have that report, and then we'll be able to have a public discussion. It will be made available publicly when, soon as, as soon as I get it. So that's the information I have.
Thank you. Are there questions? Okay. Thank you for staying on top of that. And now, Dr. Conti or Dr. Chen?
Again, I just, we probably need to go over what CARE stands for again. But again, this is, the, the, what I sort of misjudged, and I think Dr. Chen has done a great job of, is giving the staff a chance to talk about what it is they do. They're very excited about it. And I feel like I've shortchanged them. And Lisa's done a great job of making sure that we're highlighting all of their incredibly hard work. So Lisa, I'll turn it over to you for the Journey to Cares.
Yes. And what CARE stands for is that it really stands for a lot of the great work that's already happened here. And I think, you know, the learning, the equity and the thriving was always the how. But I think often what staff would want to say is the why. Why do we do this? Right? And so what I saw in reading through all the documents, through all the work that you have done, especially as an outsider, I saw CARE. So we came up with this together. We cultivate a caring community. We accept others for who they are. We respect all human differences, the R, respect. We build excellence and awe, the E, and we strive for student success every day. And that encompasses what I see and the, the vision and what we all see of what Burlington stands for. And the reason why it's CARES, C dot A dot R dot E dot S dot 1.0, is because this is a journey. You don't get it right the first time. You're always learning how to become better and better so you can make the best school system possible for all of our students. And that is the essence of CARES. So I, I hope that explains it. I just want to make sure. So in this Journey to Cares, and thank you so much, Mr. Kuna, for also being the clicker. On, on the first page, we, a lot of us, many of us went, we attended students coming back. We attended the Memorial Elementary Schools Faculty Meeting, the Nurses Department Meeting, the Mentor Men, Mentee Meeting. There was a Pine Glen's Hero Assembly, the BHS Activities Fair, the School Counselors Department Meeting. There was a Character Meeting for all student athletes, the Social Studies Department Meeting, a Math Meeting, the ESL Department Meeting, and the Instructional Technology Department Meeting. And there, as you can see the pictures, are that one is of our preschool students being welcomed back, another is the kindergarten students. And then on your left-hand side is Dr. Purchase and her team giving out the Grade Eight Transition Night. So all this happened within such a short period of time. Next. Again, a lot of this is what I just highlighted. We have the kindergarten class coming at Pine Glen. That's the Math Department Meeting, in which they're really starting to take a very hard look at the math curriculum and discussing it. And Katie Whipcombe is doing an excellent job of leading that. You have two clubs, for instance, and that comes from the Activity Fairs. One is the African American Student Association. One is the multicultural club. So these are just two of the many clubs that are offered at the high school. And there you have a picture of me taking a picture of listening to all the important news of what's coming up with the MCAS reports. And what does that all mean? And just paying attention to that. And that will later come in the, in October to explain where we are, yeah, using Open Architect to give you a little bit more data on our growth data and such. Next. To highlight especially our changing population, right now, we have a total of 320, 310 English lang, English language learner students. 70 students thus far have been screened, and 35 students have been identified. So again, when Dr. Conti talks about one in four being our ELL students, we have a total of 310 students now with over 57 different languages being spoken. That's pretty amazing. But our population's changing. To the Simon Youth Academy, as you had pointed out, seven students attended, all 100% attendance rate. And the first graduate on track to graduate this semester, we're offering ESL adult classes for beginner and early intermediate, upper intermediate and advanced classes, both September 18th through November 13th. There will be an LPAC meeting. This will be the first of the meeting. I intend to join that meeting. It's on October 2nd. And then really, Carrie Lamprey did an excellent job of presenting, knowing all of our learners to the middle school and high school staff. And there really was a focus of, when we first got here during convocation, to hear all of our students. And we had a lot of our students welcoming back the middle school and high school staff in their own language and talking about what they want to get out of Burlington Public Schools and why they want this education. It was pretty touching. And they were saying hi to all their teachers. Next. Really want to thank Chrissy Concepcion, who happens to be here with us tonight. Thank you so much, first of all. And all the hard work that she has done of kicking off the professional development for Wave Finder, of the social emotional curriculum that stems all the way from pre-K through 5. Here you see a picture of students identifying, even in early age, what is the difference between someone being kind and what is the difference between someone being unkind? Ongoing social emotional learning lessons, pre-K through 8. We're piloting two social emotional programs. The pilot character Strong for six weeks, also another social emotional learning curriculum for grades 6 through 8. And she's been hard at work of also being part of learning to update the Bullying Prevention Intervention Plan, which is also on our website, including the multi-tiered approach that we use for bullying prevention and intervention. Also not on here. Chrissy Concepcion is also working with a team of folks to, to interview our new health and PE teacher. That's very important. I think one of the things that we're looking for is someone in that new position to also embed a lot of the social emotional curriculum. So it's not only just physical education, but we're also looking for both the physical health, emotional health, and the mental health, and to work very, very hand-in-hand with Chrissy Concepcion. Next, please. Again, there is a lot of mental health supports and partnership. We worked on internal policies, student risk assessments, abuse and neglect for 51 reporting. This is what Chrissy Concepcion and her team did. Streamlined, again, we're in the process, streamlining the 504 Plan process because we're about to get new regulations. So that's something that we need to do and sit down with all of our school counselors. And this is very exciting that we are through, thank you so much, through Dr. Conti and his assistants, and Chrissy Concepcion, and also Rosemary De Souza is also assisting me and sitting in on these meetings. There is a potential to work with Dr. Altman and two other divisions in initiating what is called a collaborative care model. And we would probably be one of the first in the nation to offer something like this. But what we're looking, and it's in the baby, baby, baby steps, is offering free mental health care for all of our students and our staff as well, too. So it's very, very exciting. So it's a wraparound service that we want to provide for folks here. Next. As part of the instructional team in elementary math, we're looking at professional development with all the new math specialists. We have set up ST Math, grade level testing and model lessons in pre-K through 5. Elementary literacy, we can continue to do the Keys to Literacy, and that's with Renee Sacco. And she's doing a lot of Keys to Literacy professional development, and that's occurring also for reading comprehension and writing. We are continuing on with the DIVLs assessment. And this year, what's going to happen is that the kindergarten parents are going to be receiving a DIVLs report. We're going to give more information. Renee and I will be putting something out to all the parents before they receive that report, and that will be forthcoming. In the secondary literacy, we're having book talks with Keys to Literacy, and it's to make sure that we're teaching content writing and key comprehensional routine skills, and making sure that we're consistent all the way from pre-K through 12. Next, please. In elementary science, we've looked at the K through 5 science curriculum scope and sequence. We've also developed a schedule for them to meet grade level teachers to talk about the new curriculum. And then working really with the science leaders K through 12, and also thank you, Mr. Kuna, the Director of Facility, on what is known as a chemical hygiene plan. And what the chemical hygiene plan is, it's just a safety plan because we do have chemicals here, right? Especially at the high school. And so we just want to make sure that all our students are safe, you know, not only with the goggles, but also the disposing of chemicals, right? Considering that we have so many students here who take AP chemistry classes. We met with the K through 12 math leaders to begin and talk about the progression of the math curriculum. And this is very exciting. We also met with Dr. Thunder. Dr. Conti was on that, was on that phone call as well, too, as well as some of the lead math coach and elementary principals, as well as the middle school principal, and also the math leaders just to discuss what our math professional development is going to look like, especially our curriculum review. And so I'm about to get a proposal from her to see how much it is. But everyone who met Dr. Thunder really liked who she was and really liked what she had to offer us, especially when it came to the curriculum review. Next. Dr. Conti and I also met with the Public Information Officer from Charlottesville to learn about if we were to have a position, what might that position be? Why we chose Charlottesville, Virginia is simply because Charlottesville, Virginia, first of all, I'm, I'm familiar with that area. Second of all, this woman comes very highly, highly, highly recommended. And they have a population that is similar to ours in size. And in that particular, they call them in the South, divisions, they have actually two public information officers. And this really is, just with all the things that are going on with the media, this is just the way to watch the temperatures, see what's going on, and to also communicate, communicate with the community positive things that are going on. And so we just wanted to learn more about what those positions look like. We met with the K through 12 science leaders to begin to talk about the progression of the science curriculum, considering that we're going to have a new science MCAS test. It's going to be based on the national, more of the NGSS stand, National Science Standards. And so we're starting to take a hard look at that and just seeing, because that test is going to look a bit different than what the test has been recently. We met with the elementary principals to discuss elementary programming, scheduling and support. We worked with the Director of Special Education and the Support Service Coordinator to streamline the homebound process. And again, we began the Computer Science for All. This is very exciting. Lessons for pre-K through 5 and lessons for grades 3 through 5. And this is just very exciting because what it does is it continues to promote the importance of computer science for all. And it starts it at a very young age, and it starts to build everyone up. Next, please. The instructional team are also, are settling into their classroom teams and meeting providers. New team chairs are assigned liaisons and introduced to their families. We've gone over protocols, curriculum and equipment, and we're ensuring that equitable access meetings have been scheduled for all students. Next, in the Business and Finance Team, and of course, I have Nicole here, who if I'm saying anything incorrectly, she can correct me on the spot. Worked on writing the specs for Request for Services, the owner projects manager for the Burlington High School Feasibility Study, processed many of the first pay, payrolls returning 10-month in employees. And this was due to Deb Callahan and Vicky Sousa. Want to give a shout out to them both. This department worked on the 2023 end-of-year report for the state, purchased over, processed over 900 purchase orders, and worked with a grant coordinator, Kristin Freaky, Freaky, to assist educators in applying for some new grant opportunities. They hate grant crimes, prevention, homeless, emergency support, and also the Cummings Grant, and calculated the COLA increases on transportation contract for this fiscal year and communicated with the vendor. and calculated the COLA increases on transportation contract for this fiscal year and communicated with the vendor. Our communication team continued to work on slides and resources for the district website, presented to staff meetings about Parent Square and new login, streamlined communications again with accessibility, and looking at best practices for updating old communications to this new platform, and just worked in general to help troubleshoot some of the user profiles. The human resource team has been working hand-in-hand with folks to interview and hire the director of physical education and health K through twelve. And we hope to be able to wrap that up by midway October. Just so that you know, she attended the administrative council two-day training, assisted in the new teacher orientation, and has been looking at making sure that all training materials are rolled out properly for all of us since we have a deadline of, I think, September, all staff on September twenty-ninth to finish all of the trainings on vector. And welcomed back our returning substitute teacher and began adding new substitutes to the roster. Our nursing team has been working very hard on ensuring that we meet regulatory requirements for both physical educations when it comes to all the screening and the immunizations. Worked on mapping out medical data for SNAP, created communities and policies and procedures, made sure that we worked on translations for all medical documents, and really started to work on the 2024 Medical Emergency Response Plan for the district. And our operations team, we completed nuts, we completed the fire drills inspections of all schools, completed work orders with the maintenance team. And I know Bob and his team has been very much hard at work at answering a lot of questions about bus routes. They're reviewed daily. They've added additional bus routes. They've even worked with the Burlington Police hand-in-hand when they've had some concerns from parents about whether or not a particular bus route is safe. And he's done yeoman's work on that and spent a lot of time with that. And he installed and supplemented air conditions at Fox Hill. And the technology team has been hard at work. Out of one thousand one hundred and thirteen tickets, they resolved nine hundred and sixty-nine of those tickets as of September twentieth. They repaired computers and set up and tuned up devices. They distributed iPads. They provided support at all the open houses, and we're in the process of getting some cybersecurity training from them. And then finally, in our last slide, and I know you guys attended this, and I appreciate this, was with the Pine Glen, the ceremony for the heroes on that day, in which we thanked the first responders, both in the fire and also with the police, and this was a celebration that Pine Glen did. And so we've been very busy at work, but none of this could not be done without the hard work of this entire team. And this entire team includes both at the district level, it includes you guys, thank you, and also includes the hard work of our, of our staff and our parents and families and that of our students. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chen. Again, a big mouthful. And it's, represents all the work that the staff in our district are doing and that you are doing. And we really appreciate everyone. There's a lot of really great stuff happening, so thank you. All right, Dr. Conti, what do you have for us next?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have a first reading of Section I. And as this is a first reading, I did get feedback from a committee member with some questions. So I'll incorporate those questions into a document, and I'll share it with all of you, some questions and comments. I'm not sure if you, I think you have a copy of my notes and, and the different policies. I think we've covered some of these in some individual conversations. So I think, I'm hoping the policies would clarify some of that. So again, there's, in Section I, there's the responsible use policies, Mr. Brooks, that we had, we had discussed. And if you want to see different language, then if you could get me that, get me that feedback. But this was, it's really about, Section I is just a lot about the kind of, I think it's the, they call it the academic freedom section, but I think you have all of that, all the information that you need. If there are any real questions, I don't think I need to step through all the policies tonight. And if there's any information or more information you need, please let me know, and we'll, we'll follow up and get you whatever you need. And I think we have maybe two more after Section I.
Before we go on to J, I just wanted to ask if anyone in there perusing of this had issues that came to you before that you wanted to let the rest of us know about. Mr. Brooks?
So for IJNDD, the policy for social media, that's, really think we need to look at that, put a little more guardrails in for a little stronger language for front-facing communications, and maybe, you know, put some policy in place where there's a, you know, a hierarchy or a chain of events to get front-facing communications, because we've stumbled in the past, and, you know, I just want, don't want us to do that again.
Could you repeat the initials, because I think I missed it?
So it would be India, Juliet, November, Delta, Delta.
Okay, thank you. All right. Other questions? For me, I, I, there's a lot of these about using technology. And we have some real experts in Mr. D'Souza and Mr. Lulano. And, and I would like to know if there's, some of the, the policies seem to be overlapping, I guess. Not repetitive. There were different things. And, and I'm wondering if there's a way to make them simpler. And one option in my mind for our second reading is to suggest that we pass them as is, but request that we ask the IT department to look through them and see if they can streamline them, for example. So that was an issue that came up for me. Any further questions or issues on, comments on Section I? Seeing none, Dr. Conti? Oh, question, Mrs. Monaco.
This, the one that Jeremy was talking about, is, is that a, it's our policy. Does MASC have a policy that's more in-depth?
So I think the changes had the MASC policy. One of the policies, as I perused around Franklin Public Schools, had a pretty decent one that put some of the language in place that I was looking for. And that can almost be kind of a cut and paste for some of that stuff.
I'm just wondering what MASC has.
So through, through the chair, I think what you're looking at is the MASC policy. Burlington didn't have a policy, and if there have been other local augmentations.
This one? Am I on the right one?
What are the initials?
But in, in my notes, that's, it says MASC only, this MASC policy. So again, that may be incorrect in your computer. But you, Mr. Brooks, I'm sorry, you said Franklin? You wanted me to take a look at?
Craiglin.
All right. Any further comments or questions on Section I? Okay, Ms. Monaco?
I'm curious, what the, what does the Franklin one have?
So basically, it, it puts a little more, not really rules, but just guidelines on how we're going to use social media in a personal and professional manner when talking about the district and representing yourself as a member of the district. So I think that language is a little stronger in Franklin's policy than it is in the MASC policy.
Okay. I'd like to see it.
We'll get it.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. Dr. Conti, shall we move on to Section J?
Again, Section J, this is a second reading. I didn't get any comments from committee members in the interim between the first and the second reading. I think you had my notes. The committee did approve of the bullying prevention policy, just because we needed to get that up on the, on the website. But beside that, I'd recommend the school committee approve Section J at a second reading. And then I'll get that information to Dorothy Presser at MASC. And then, and again, nothing would preclude you from going back once all the policies are done and making adjustments as you have moving forward. But I recommend the school committee approve Section J as a second reading.
Okay, any further discussion? So for, for the questions or discussion? No. So I don't feel the need to go through all the sections again. My question, though, Dr. Conti, is when you say, as presented, for example, you recommended we eliminate JIB because it wasn't needed. Is that the way we're voting on, the way your notes read?
Yes.
Okay.
And I didn't hear any, I'm just taking a stab with Ms. Presser, and if you all have different ideas, I'm just trying to give you what her recommendations are, looking at the comparison of MASC language and the existing Burlington language.
The JEB just says requires conversation, so which?
That's what I have my hand up.
Okay, so the JEB does require conversation. Okay. So do you want to comment on it now, Ms. Chair?
Good point. I thought Dr. Conti wanted to go with MASC on that, I believe, but.
So through the chair, Ms. Massardo, again, we've, we've had this conversation before. So JEB is the age of attendance. The MASC policy has one hard date, which I believe is September first. Any student who turns five prior to September first is eligible to attend kindergarten, kindergarten, sorry. Anyone who is born after September first, honor after September first, they need to wait until the following year. Our existing Burlington policy has an eight-week window where parents can petition the district and we can assess. We have a hard time telling those parents no. Even though it may not be our recommendation, there are parents who want their children in school. And it's not just because they're academically ready. We also consider other things like their social-emotional growth. And it may not be how the child can adjust to kindergarten, because those classes are very individualized and accepting. It may be how does that child function in middle school if they're significantly younger than their, than their peers? And there are also our gender differences in terms of certainly maturity. I don't think people would argue with me with that. So I just think the, and districts do it both ways. So I just think it would be easier on the staff if we had a hard date, that was a single date. It's simpler to explain. But if the committee wants to keep a window of exception, what I would wanted to have a discussion with, if we could shrink it from eight weeks to four weeks. So that would be better for us. So we wouldn't look at students from September first through October thirty-first. We would look at students from September first through September thirtieth, if, if parents wanted to make an exception for attendance.
So do people understand what, so we are going to have, so we'll converse now on this JEB. Ms. Monaco?
I guess I've been a stickler over the years for keeping a window. I think a child that's born September second that's really ready for school shouldn't have to wait. I, I think I can live with the going to the end of September instead of the end of October. But I do think that there, you know, there are, there are kids born in June that aren't ready, and there are kids born in October that are ready. So, you know, it's very hard on parents. It's very, very hard on parents when they have a child either way that isn't ready or that is more than ready. And to, to, to me, to stick with the hard date is unkind. It's like, it's just, you know, you slam the door on something and why? You know, we should have more heart than that, I think. So I could compromise and go with the one month instead of two months. But I do think there should be some opportunity for exception.
Okay, Ms. Bond?
I just have a question. How often do we make exceptions? On what, you know, I mean, how many students on average per year we, you know, when we have the extension, are we actually, you know, I guess, listening to when then they either decide to put them in or not, based on that assessment?
Typically, three or four. There's not, I mean, there's not an overwhelming number. But, but it's just that, there's, there's a lot of gray. I would agree with Mrs. Monaco. Every child is, is sort of unique in their own way. It's just a difficult conversation. It can even set up an adversarial conversation, relationship with the parents right off. We don't want to do that. Again, we may make a recommendation that we feel your child isn't ready, and the parents may say, oh, they are. And again, typically, we defer to the, to the parents. And so no one wants to be proven right. We want every child to be successful. So I mean, honestly, once we get past that date, we all sort of move forward and, and like it's nothing. It's just, it's just, it's a really hard decision that I'm not sure we have all the tools to make really well. So we are, we are meeting with the child. We're doing some assessments. You know, with a five-year-old, we're looking at ability to attend. It's, it's not a painful process at all. Our, our folks really try to make it as fun as they, as fun as they can. But typically, a parent who's asking for that exception has already made their mind up that their child is ready. So it's, it's just a matter of getting through that process. So it's just one of those things that a hard date is easier to manage. But I do think, again, it may come across as a hard date is unkind, but at some point, we have to have a cutoff. And so again, I, I think we can try it with the four weeks. And that way, we'll, we'll have some room. And I think that would be easier for my staff, and we can come back, and I'll talk about it if, if it continues to be an issue. You all will hear about it, believe me. That's when, when students are eligible. So I think you'll hear about these situations. And I, I think it may be a policy that we may need to revisit. But that's, that was why I put in my notes. We just need to have that, that conversation.
Yes, Ms. Massardo?
I'm not necessarily passionate either way. I just agree that at some point, there needs to be a date. And if it's October first, then let's just say October first, then if we're, I don't know. I think we, the district kind of does a lot of exceptions. And maybe this could be our first step to saying it aligns with the state, and here's the policy. It just seems like you have a point, like it has to be a date at some point. I mean, if you want to back it up thirty days for this year and then see how it goes. But you're slamming the door on October first, people. At some, so at some point, you have to say no. But again, I'm not passionate either way, but yeah, I agree. At some point, there needs to be an actual date.
Other comments? Or did you have a response? I, when I looked at this, we spent a lot of time looking at this policy in the last few years. And I also feel like it's sometimes too long. And I, I would be in favor of your compromise suggestion, especially where we could put it in, in our policy manual now. And then at any point, we can revisit it and look at the, the policy and decide if, having the one-month extension, having September first be the date, but that October first is up until October first, there could be a request for assessment. And it would still put our staff in the same position, but not with as many students. I, I'm concerned about the things that you raise, which is it sets off a negative if, if the staff feel that the student isn't. And it's usually a social-emotional readiness. It's not usually academics. We all know kids who are, you know, off the charts when they arrive at any particular grade, but it doesn't mean that they're going to be happy kids in that grade with that peer cohort. So, so I would accept a motion regarding this entrance age.
I'll amend, I'll, should I amend it or would Derek do it over?
Did we already have a motion to accept the whole thing?
To accept the whole thing.
No, we didn't. Okay.
We did. I made it, and Catherine seconded it.
Oh. Okay, so.
So I'll, I'll amend it to say that. So, I'll amend it to say that... What's the...
The 30 days.
JEB, yeah. That policy JEB, the entrance age, be changed to say that the cutoff date is September 1st with... How do you want to word it, Eric?
Four weeks, a four-week window.
Well, the month of September, 30 days has September, so, yeah.
Do you want to say October 1st? I mean...
Yeah, Ms. Bond? The children born, there may be exceptions at the discretion of the superintendent for children born within the month of September.
We have current language that we maybe could just replace the eight weeks with the four weeks.
So, this is admission to first grade in the policy. Are we talking admission to kindergarten?
Yeah.
Yes.
Which one is it, then?
It's honestly, it's really both, so...
Well, this says kindergarten.
Well, it says for an exception to be admitted to first grade, for students who did not meet the kindergarten age requirement. If a child turns six between August 31st and October 31st, exceptions may be made, yada, yada, attended a rigorous kindergarten program and can demonstrate readiness.
Which policy is that?
JEB.
Is there something previous to that about kindergarten?
I don't see that in JEB that I've got.
So, we're working off the merged version or the changes version?
With changes, this is page seven.
You know what, what if we accept, what if we accept for the second reading, every policy except JEB and have it rewritten for the next meeting?
Sounds like a great plan. So, you have now amendment to your motion?
Just take all the motions back. Just, I withdraw my motion. You withdraw your second, Catherine?
I do.
And I move that we accept section J without policy JEB for a second reading.
And...
I'll second it.
And we have a second. Is there further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, the chair votes aye, that's 5-0-0. And Dr. Conti, for our next meeting, will provide us with language for JEB that has October 1st in it, and it would also include kindergarten, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And please give me any notes on section aye. And then, we'll see what the agendas look like, as I think we have... Mary Ann, I'm looking at you, K, and I think K and L is it, right?
Yep, yep.
So, and I think they're relatively short, so...
So, we'll do K or K and L next time, depending how long there?
Let's see how long the agendas are, and we'll go from there.
Okay, Ms. Monaco.
One of the things that just came up in this discussion that kind of bothers me a little is when you have a child and parents want them evaluated to enter kindergarten because after September 1st. Whatever the evaluation is, is it a good enough evaluation that the parents should be willing to accept the outcome of it? Because it doesn't seem like the right thing to do to cave in because someone wants their child to go if they're clearly not ready and the staff has determined the child isn't ready. Like, that just seems to be the wrong way to handle these exceptions.
Again, I think the staff, it's very time-consuming. Our staff does a very good job. They have good relationships with a lot of the preschools in our area. So, typically, they'll have conversations with the child's preschool teacher or the director. We don't know the child as a learner. So, it's really hard for us to say. There's a very accurate assessment that we can use on a five-year-old. Again, they have, they're very experienced and they try to look at some, again, different measures. But there's really nothing we can typically share with a parent. And usually, if they're asking for an exception, there's a reason that they're asking for that exception. And like, we'll make a recommendation. And we, I, I should say, I tend to defer to parents' request, even if my staff doesn't agree with my, with my decision. So, again, I think the flexibility is fine. And we're all in, once the child starts school, we're all in. We don't, there's no indicator that the child's, what their birthdate is. And again, we oftentimes can have those better conversations the more we know the child as a, you know, as a learner. And the reason first grade's important is you all know that kindergarten isn't required. So, there are many parents who, if they don't make an age cutoff, will send their child to a kindergarten outside of the district and then want their child not to repeat kindergarten, but to start in first grade when they attend, which is when mandatory attendance begins. So, and there are many different aspects to this, so... And different families have different choices. Some want their child to be as old as possible, and some want their child to be as young as possible.
Yes, Ms. Massardo?
Do we repeat the same process for first grade? Like, so if we say, okay, you missed the cutoff, your child... My birthday's September 10th, right? So, you missed the cutoff. I go to Mount Hope for a kindergarten-like program. And then, I still miss the cutoff for first grade, right?
Yes.
Okay, do they, you have the same exception policy?
Uh-huh. And so, that's, again, when they start and how they start, whether they would say a September 10th child who has gone to Mount Hope should repeat our kindergarten program would be the conversation that we would have. Used to be more of a problem when our kindergarten was sort of like a three-quarter day. It's less of a problem now because it follows the same schedule as the rest of the elementary. So, it limits the childcare issues potentially. But I think from a parent's perspective, they might say, oh, my child's already done kindergarten. Why would they do kindergarten again? And again, it can be a completely different experience and very enriching. And so, those are the conversations that we're having with families.
Ms. Bond?
Yeah, no, I was going to ask that question when you said something about first grade, because you have someone who moves from out of state, for example. Cut-offs are different in different states.
Right.
So, you have a family who, their child attended kindergarten, did very well. Now, they move here. Are you going to tell them they have to repeat kindergarten again? You know, if they're a November child.
Right.
Right? So, that's where I have a little issue. I myself was in that situation. That's why I kind of think twice about everything, because I was a transfer student moving from one state to another. And my parents purposely moved us a week late so that I could continue in first grade and wouldn't have to repeat kindergarten.
And again, it's an inexact science, because I think you turned out okay. So, I just, I would say that. So, again, we're doing our best. And in Burlington, it's not just about children moving from other states. We also have lots of children who move from other countries. And their grade structures may be a little bit different. So, again, we would look at the curriculum content that they were covering. And again, a lot of the learning in kindergarten may not be necessarily content-based, but would be a lot of social, a lot of structured play, a lot of other those, you know, those things. So, I think all of us would benefit from an extra year of kindergarten, I would say. But I think that's what the policy is for. And again, it is an inexact, inexact science. Having, I think, some gray is a kinder sort of way to go about doing it. But again, typically, my staff says, if you're just going to allow them all in, then why are we wasting our time? So, again, honestly, that's kind of what they're saying. And, but I do like to try to, for those students moving into town, really try to at least get a bit of a preview of who they are as a learner, because, but we have to get to know all our kids as learners at those ages anyway, so... I think that's why some districts just have a hard date. And people know that date when they move in, or they check.
Yes, any further questions or comments? Okay, so at our next meeting, we'll be able to finalize JEB. Dr. Conti, next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You're tired of me, but Fox Hill Building Committee update. And we had the community meeting, was it last Monday? I'm trying to remember. We have the, the thought exchange is open. And Bob, you handed out an update today. And do you want to go through some of that, sort of where we are in process?
Can we, Mr. Conti, could you also clarify that this is halfway through? This is an update, but not everyone, there's still another week for people to comment and rate other ideas, right?
Again, 100%, this is just that, that's going to, the thought exchange is going to be open till the end of the month. And I would encourage anyone, even if you have additional thoughts, to make sure that they get added. Or if you're new to the thought exchange, please, please jump into the conversation.
And I believe the deadline is September 29th.
Yeah. And I didn't really prepare another update. This is just a standing agenda item. So, if anyone else would like to contribute, you are more than welcome to. So, Bob, you handed something out?
So, I'm sorry, yes, through the chair. So, I do want to comment first that we had great participation at the community meeting. So, we had 130 people in person in, at 1.97 online, higher than my numbers that I had predicted. So, that's, again, great participation. As Dr. Conti mentioned, thought exchange, so these are preliminary numbers. These were polled yesterday. So, as of yesterday, we are looking at approximately 286 participants who have contributed 353 thoughts. And of those 353 thoughts, they have been rated 19,472 times. Again, this is a different concept than just putting out a survey where you say, here's four choices picked from one of four choices. What this is asking the community or any of the participants to do is to share a thought. And then, other participants can go and rate those thoughts on a scale of one to five, one being not favorable, three being neutral, and four being in favor of. This is not a back-and-forth conversation. It's, again, not a survey. It's really just to explore the community's thoughts and then see if there's other like-minded opinions on those same thoughts.
Okay. Is there anything else you wanted to comment on, Mr. Kuna? Okay, Dr. Conti?
Madam Chair, I believe the next School Building Committee meeting is October 3rd. And that's at 6 o'clock in this room, and it's going to be hybrid. We have town meeting occurring tomorrow night. And there's a video, sort of an update that was created by, I believe, the designer in the OPM. And that's going to be played as a report at the start of town meeting. And then, there's going to be a table in the hallway where our designer and OPM are going to be available to answer questions and also allow people to access the thought exchange.
Any other updates from the Fox Hill Building?
Did you want to talk at all about some of the tours that were taken? Because, I mean, it was interesting to, you know, I was only able to make one of them, but it was very interesting to go to the Harold Wyman School and listen to the teachers' feedback on what's working and where they could see improvements. They talked a lot about the stage in the cafeteria, you know, that it needed to be up higher so that parents could see their students and that there wasn't enough room when they have performances. So, I got feedback on that. Some teachers were talking about the outdoor space outside of the classrooms and what was working and wasn't working. So, it was really interesting to get some good feedback so that whatever we decide to build, we've, you know, kind of a little better informed, is the way I'm looking at it.
Any other specifics you wanted, that you wanted to mention? No? Mr. Brooks?
Just like to echo Ms. Bond's comments. And then, again, with the feedback I got from a few of the teachers, had a few candid moments, and they basically said one of their biggest heartburns was repurposing space from day one. So, to Mr. Preston's comment and others, you know, really right sizing this building is something we need to take a hard look at.
Ms. Massardo, any comments from the visits?
Yeah, I was going to present more at the School Building Committee. I think that's an agenda item there. But it was, it was good to see the... Harold Wyman was a Denisco building. The Acton Boxborough is, Gates, Douglas Gates was not. So, it was, it was very obvious. I feel like we have a sense of what Denisco designs now. So, it was, it was interesting to see, based on what we've started to look at. Harold Wyman definitely looks more like what we will end up with than the Douglas Gates. Yeah, I have some notes I didn't bring tonight, but they were, it was, it was good to see.
My, I have, oh, Ms. Monaco.
I wasn't on the tour, but since the Assistant Superintendent for Student Services is my daughter in Woburn, I know that the building was not intended for some of the programs that have moved into it, which I think is one of the things that we have managed to accomplish with our plan is to have those spaces built into the building. Because you can always move programs around if you have space. And in Woburn, they didn't. And when they built that, had they built a little extra space, maybe they would have had room for the program to start with. I think Dr. Conti's been very careful about building extra space in literacy classrooms. So, there are actually a lot of classrooms designed into those buildings.
And I have had, been fortunate to visit three, three different schools that were built new, and two of them were built by the Denisco designers. And I also, it, the idea of having a new building for our students that are bright and include a lot of daylight. They have ways of building with glass over the doorways so that the natural light can come in. There's a lot, you know, healthier air quality. There's a lot of possibilities for sustainability. And I, I hope we'll be able to build a new building for our students. And I think it makes sense for us to have further, you know, details from the visits, from the site visits at the Building Committee meeting next week. Thank you. All right, any other comments on the, on the Elementary School Building Committee updates? No? Okay, next item is the Burlington High School Building Committee updates.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think we discussed last time, the, we had the first meeting of the Burlington High School Building Committee. And I guess the most significant agenda item was vote to approve the RFS for an OPM, so the Request for Services for the Owner's Project Manager. And so, Nicole, where are we in that process?
Yeah, so, that, that opens up tomorrow, so people can start requesting the documents. And then, those would all be due back on October 16th. And then, from there, we have the selection committee that we formed of, I think, 11 people that will review and help us shortlist, and we'll go from there.
Okay, Ms. Monaco?
Do you have any idea, have you had any inquiries? You know, does it look like you've got a lot of companies looking to...
Yeah, so, it's, it's already posted like up on our, like our website where people can pull it down. Just make sure we don't miss like the cutoff there. And I've already had like about 15 people requested.
Oh, good. That's good, we have a lot of reading to do.
Is that in line with Fox Hill?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. We had eight OPM submissions. Yeah, no, no, that's what I'm saying, but like, so roughly 15 or more people looked, and it narrowed down to eight.
Oh, like I'm saying, as, in terms of early on, like, people requesting this is in line with the same like responses that we got early on.
Okay.
That's great, good to hear. Any other updates for the VHS Building Committee? All right, is there any update on the Pine Glen?
Again, this is a standing agenda item. And Bob, I would just say, I got to Pine Glen a couple times, but I really look at the, the additional office spaces that were created where the room they call the egg was. And I do think it makes a big difference. So, I want to thank, that was an internal job, right? That was the maintenance crew that did it here. So, I thought they did a really... That was the maintenance crew that did it here. So I thought they did a really nice job. So please pass on my, my gratitude, gratitude to them. The front looks really good, right? They took some trees down and that paving, again, was that town pavers who did that?
Yes, through the chair. So again, I also want to echo the in-house maintenance staff. So they did perform the removal and demolition of the Egg Room, constructed two new office spaces. So we effectively doubled the working space in the main corridor. Also, the DPW did work with us to repave the front parking lot area, not the parking lot itself, but the walkway that's in front of Pine Glen. But the DPW also restriped the entire parking lot for all the parking spaces. We did have to remove some trees as discussed previously, but Pine Glen looks like a, almost a new building from the front. And again, when you walk in the main entrance, you have a whole new area that is great to look at. So staff is already in there using those spaces now.
That's really good to hear. I, I was fortunate to attend the Activities Fair and I met, there's an Arbor Club at the high school where they focus on trees and planting trees and promoting trees. And I would, I encourage them to get in touch with you about possibility of, of making sure that the trees that were taken down maybe could be replaced in a different location where they wouldn't ruin the sidewalks, et cetera. And maybe if you had the opportunity, you could perhaps reach out to them. Okay? And Ms. Monaco, you had a comment?
I, we talked about this at the last meeting, but on the air conditioning for Pine Glen, I guess it was kind of missed this year. Will anything come up at tomorrow night's town meeting? Even a mention of it or is that just planned for May?
We don't have anything planned for tomorrow night, so we would look at that, I think, as part, part of a conversation with the committee about warrants, but we haven't even begun sort of that process, looking at what, what we would do with, with that warrant article or anything, but that would be a decision this committee would make.
So we, earlier we were talking about the Fox Hill project relative to town meeting. Is there something tomorrow night about that?
There's a, a video. I think it's about a two and a half minute video. And then there'll be a table outside of town meeting in the hallway where the designer, the OPM are there. And they'll have some iPads if people wanted to join the thought exchange and they didn't have a device with them. I think they'll also be answering any questions that, that town meeting members may, may have.
Okay, so we don't have anything, we don't have any warrants, anything on the warrant, but we will be there.
Yeah, I, again, I plan on being there for a while. I think it depends how long it goes and what the traffic's like. But I'll, I'll be there for, I mean, the, the foot traffic, not the, not the car traffic.
I just want to clarify that the video is more in relation to like what town meetings' expectations are for the feasibility study, right? They funded the feasibility study. So Amy just asked that we give them some expectations of town meetings. So the vote, like the, when the funding vote would be, things like that, what actually town meeting would vote for. It's not too much else than that. It's just more of like what town meeting needs to know about the feasibility study.
Is it at the beginning of the meeting?
Yes.
And it's short?
It's two and a half minutes and Mr. Byer assured me there's no questions or commentary about it.
All right. He's good at that.
Through the chair, Bob, I, I remember there being a, was there a sort of map of the United States painted on the former Pine Glen blacktop that they replaced?
You're correct. There was a map there. That map is not there now.
Is the town planning on replacing that?
The town is not planning on replacing it, but conversations have been had at Pine Glen. The gym teacher and the principal as to a possible potential replacement of that, but not today. It's not in the works currently. So you have to stay tuned as to whether or not we can make that happen.
All right.
We need to make that happen.
It's the important stuff.
Make, make state happen.
And regarding, is there anything else on that item? And I, I was hoping, Mr. Kuna, if you could give, just report out, I, I heard that there's equipment at the Francis Wyman Playground and tell, what's, so that's a good sign, right? Because now it's here and what's happening?
Again, through the chair, thank you. So yes, Francis Wyman Playground, the original one that's there has been removed. There's a temporary fence up there. The DPW, I'm sorry, the Rec Department did assist us with that and removed the old equipment. There is a construction crew there that has been there for this week doing design prep for the base structure that's there and then also laying out the design template for the new playground. All of the playground equipment has been delivered. There is an external company that is going to be doing that installation once the site prep is complete. But again, all of the equipment is in, in-house right now. So once they finish the site prep, I believe next week, we should start seeing some actual digging going on. Once the equipment's installed, of course, then we need to do the external structure of wood timbers. That's going to hold the fiber in place. And then finally, we need to have the port in place rubber company come in and install that port in place walkway. This will lead me to a future conversation, which we'll obviously bring back to the committee. There is an existing ramp down there which does not meet today's accessibility codes. So for a future conversation, it is something that we're going to work with the Rec Department and their accessibility team members to look at that. So again, once we have some, you know, rough estimates, some rough designs, again, I think we'd bring that back to the committee to look at that. There's also an existing stairway that's in the side of the hill. So again, future conversations as to what we need to do for overall site prep in that area. Again, they're not being removed as part of the existing project, but it is definitely something that we want to look at for the future going on. If there are no questions or even if there are a few more comments I'd like to make, please. So another one is that an update on work that was not completed as of our last meeting. So the high school library offices have been completed just this week. So staff members are starting to move into it currently. So again, that's a space that took a little longer than we anticipated, but is moving forward. As again, we mentioned the playground. I do want to let the committee know that we are working with the Rec Department to relocate a flagpole. So this was at the request also of the funding of Mike Espio, who was on the select board. He had had some parents' requests that either we purchase new and install new a flagpole at the Marshall Simons Middle School down on the field. And then when we looked at our area, our existing equipment and so forth, the recommendation was made by the Rec Department and by Sean Hart, our athletics director, to replace, I'm sorry, remove the existing flagpole at the high school. If you all don't remember, there is a flagpole to the right of the stands when you walk in over in the corner by the old school board. Years back, we installed a new large flagpole. So the recommendation is to take that existing one, which is in good condition, reuse that, purchase a new sleeve to put it in, new hardware and a new flag. And again, working with the Rec Department to do that and Mr. Espio is raising funds to make that happen. I'd love to talk about two more things if I have time.
Okay.
So if you haven't noticed, and this is a notice to others at home, staff and students here at the parking lot of the high school, the Burlington Police have put up a speed radar sign. Again, public notice, we do not want to encourage a top score on that. What we're trying to encourage is to make everyone aware to slow down on the high school, right, property, right? So what we have seen over time is that the speed levels are increasing, especially at nighttime, which is coming up pretty soon. Shorter days around the back corner, the back parking lot. Students and staff trying to make it to after-school activities. We really want to make sure that, you know, there are staff, there are students, there's early childhood on the backside of the school and just in general, the speed limits on the property. We want to make sure that people are aware and slow down. So again, no high scores.
Can I comment on that? Can we also post what the current, what the speed limit is?
We can do that, yes. Yep.
Thank you.
Isn't it posted at five?
Is it posted?
I, I want to say yes, but let me double check before I, yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, and you have more?
Just one more, please. If I could just give a brief, quick update on bus requests. So we're on week four right now. We have had 101 total requests to date. Please also remember that we submitted, we asked parents to use a survey that we sent out where we removed 300-plus students off of that list. So we had already retracted those before we adjusted the routes. We have made 37 changes just to parent request and that is not including any rerouting issues, any NRT, office staff or driver recommendation changes or removal or updates of any underutilized stops that were currently in the first week of bus routes. So we still have more stops to go through. We have had some contested answers to whether or not we would make some of those changes. So we are working with the police department on anything that's deemed a safety concern. We're getting a lot of concerns over safety. We're getting a lot of concerns over no sidewalks in Burlington. We're getting a lot of concerns for the distance of some of the, the bus stops to house proximities. We do take all of those serious. My team, Peggy Alagretto and Anisha Shag, again, are working with NRT, you know, to review all of these bus requests. And again, the police department, I want to thank them. So Vito Costa, Dave McLean, they've been vital in helping us with a lot of these solutions and also coming up with answers as well too. So if you all, if you all are getting questions, please direct them my way. But I think people have had an easy time finding myself and my team to make sure these requests are coming in. So please know that we are addressing them as quick as possible. So, thanks.
So thank you and thank your staff for all of these projects that are moving forward nicely. And Ms. Monaco, did you have a comment?
Yeah. It seems like, I won't, I have to be careful with my words here. It seems like there are bus issues, all of which are sort of small. But when you add them all up, it makes me think that we're missing something in the big picture of busing. A, we shouldn't have to have the high school start later because of busing. B, we shouldn't have to have parents worried about how far their kids walk to the buses. And, and all the other problems that, that come into the picture. It seems, and, and we will be doing a new bus contract in the not-too-distant future, correct? So I think we need to try to solve those problems in the next bus contract. And whether it takes more buses or whatever the answer is, there has to be an answer. We have to be able to make it work more smoothly. If we need more stops and we need to change the time back, so maybe it will require more buses or something that I'm not thinking of. But I, I do think as we go into the next bus contract, we need to try and repair all these little items so that instead of always being squeezed, we have wiggle room. You know, we have a little more time to spare in the morning. Maybe we could start school five minutes earlier instead of 10 minutes late. I mean, I'm not suggesting that, just, I'd like to plan the bus contract so that all of these things fit in a little better than they do right now. I just feel like everything's squeezed. And it's just my opinion. And I know it costs money to have more buses, but you know, what's, what's one or two buses when we're looking at, what we're looking at? Personal opinion.
Do we have like a standard, I, I think you said it once, like elementary students can walk X feet, middle school students walk Y and high schools can walk Z. Like is that, is that a standard operating procedure or, because I feel like there's like five bus stops within spitting distance of my house, so.
Through the chair, we do not have a standard operating procedure on the exact number of houses that a child may walk per grade level or per school. Obviously, looking at the town, you'll see that different neighborhoods are set up differently. Obviously, the density of where the students are located really dictates where that is. Historically, a lot of conversations happen that stop used to be here or stop used to be here. So what we do is we adapt to, again, the population of students, right? So as the student population changes, increases, left, right, that's what we look to do. So sometimes that's favorable to a particular household, sometimes it's unfavorable to a particular household. But it's not accurate for me to say that it will always be four houses or six houses or less given on a grade level of a student.
Okay. I feel like that could be something we could write into the RFP as like sophisticated software. Like I feel like there has to be a solution here where we plug in what we have and it gets more optimized than it is now. And I think a vendor should be able to be doing that for us.
Again, if I could comment, so the vendor that we have currently does have software to do that. As Ms. Monaco mentioned, we do have some constraints, given the tiers that we have right now. Again, we have a 30-minute window to drop students off and then pick up students to get to the next. So whether or not this committee and the Subcommittee for the Transportation agrees that we could have more time to do that, that's something sure we could look at into the RFS. If we want to reduce or increase the number of stops, again, we could. Obviously, the more stops is going to require more time for the routes. And then the proximity of the stops is something that we clearly can consider for the RFS that's upcoming.
Yeah, I would just love to have somebody in front of us that says, okay, the elementary school runs range from 10 minutes to 19 minutes, right? If we increase the number of houses, if we make students walk six houses instead of four, we can squeeze that down to 17 minutes. Like I'd like to see that level of analysis. If we add three buses, that reduces the spread even further or it doesn't, or I just feel like there could be analysis, right? The number of stops is one factor. The, the, I know we have, yeah, the distance travel, but I think you've mentioned that some buses pick up one or two spots and still have to go all the way across town to the high school. So an additional bus doesn't help in that scenario. But if one bus run is approaching 19 minutes, then, then yes, you can have two, another bus would help in that scenario. So I, I feel like if this, a new, a bus company should be able to come to us and say, yes, if you add three buses, you can have, you can set your own start times, right? I think we, if busing wasn't an issue, I think the start times would be different, right? We're, we're constrained on the start times by the buses. We have three tiers because we need three bus runs. If we had unlimited funds, we could have two bus runs or one and they could all start at the same time. So obviously, we have constraints, but I'd like to see like it'll cost you X to make them faster or the students walk further or you reduce, I'm not in favor of this, but if we eliminate busing a tenth of a mile around a school, right? Or make students, only students that sign up, things like that. So that's, that's what I would love and I don't know, I don't write RFPs, but something along those lines, like definitely more analytics in that regard.
I can't speak to the new RFS, the RFP that we will be writing or Nicole Koshia will be preparing. But the current one does allow us some flexibility, up to 25% and down to 25% from our current one. In the past, we have had to bring on an additional bus in order to help us with a particular dense neighborhood. So we do have that ability to do that. Yes, we, I have not asked for analytics from the company. But again, as we reroute this pretty much almost daily, this conversation is happening. So we get GPS reports, we get GPS route predictions, we get stop predictions and so forth. So we do currently have that capability to look at by adding the stop, what the prediction is and then actually go back and compare it to the GPS of what that is. Now, in a perfect world, if students were at the stop, loading students is relatively quickly, right? So you could say approximately on a, the best sunny day, maybe it adds 35 seconds to a stop. That's not the real world, right? Obviously, when you have stop and go traffic, obviously, if the students were in, you know, one second behind. one second behind, or has to actually leave their house and get to the bus, then that's where we really get the variables, obviously, that are tougher to predict. But again, if we did need a, a new bus tomorrow to add to our fleet, minus the company finding a driver for it, we have that ability in our contract to do that now.
I, I have a question about the, oh, Mr. Brooks?
So along that line, as construction's going to get hard and heavy air on 3A, maybe looking at, in the next RFP, increasing that capacity to expand or shrink to maybe 30 to 35% versus 25%, because we don't really know the impacts over that construction for the next year or two.
And I'd like to know, I know I've had conversations in the past about looking into getting electric buses. There, I, I've had conversations about a company that helps school districts procure or use electric buses without the upfront. Obviously, it's very expensive to buy electric buses, and we don't own our own, but to, they help districts promote that. And I'm wondering if that's an opportunity we could consider with this kind of an RFP or RFS? I'm not sure if I'm asking Ms. Kasha or Mr. Kuna. Ms. Kasha, maybe you could?
So I know that the state had some, like, funding opportunities for districts. Unfortunately, we weren't of the communities that they were offering those services to for electrification of buses. And then there was also, they had two separate initiatives. One was to help funding for, to get the buses, and then another pathway was to help districts that maybe could afford it procure things like that, and sort of get those things in order, and the charging stations and all those things needed. I had, like, put our name into, for that second pathway, and we weren't accepted to that either. So in terms of, I guess, assistance from, like, this, the state to explore those, unfortunately, we weren't selected.
And what, what about that company in, I think it was called Highland something, where they, they put the money out front, and we would pay an annual fee? Did you find out anything about that? Would they be able to? I, I don't know how it works, so I'm...
I haven't, I haven't looked into that.
Mr. Kuna, I think I might have spoken to you about it, too. Do you, is there any more information that you have on that?
Through the chair. So I was trying to briefly look at some of my previous notes. I don't recall enough information to accurately tell you how that conversation went. Again, I know that you and I had, you've spoken to a couple of companies, or at least one company in particular, that had some local experience around here. But again, I, I don't recall enough information to...
Ms. Masardo?
My recollection, I think I spoke with them extensively at the school committee conference. I think we could put it in our RFP. The Highland fleets would sell directly to us. I don't know if that's what we're looking for at this point in time, but they will work with the vendors as well. So we, we could put in our RFP that we're interested in one or two electric buses as part of like our overall contract and things like that. You know more than I on the RFP, but it sounds like the state is trying to standardize them or trying to help the districts with them. So I'm sure there's probably language around some of this electrical programs, but I think we could start with one or two as more of a pilot. And I know that third party helps the different vendors, and we have NRT, and so we talked to him, and he was supplying some electric buses to different NRT contracts. So you'd still contract with whatever vendor, but then they could, like, get a few electric buses on your behalf.
So is that something that you could find out about, see how to include it in the RFP?
Yeah, we might be able to do it as like, like an alternate option, too, on there. But I'll, I'll look into that.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions or comments on the bus contract, on the facilities? Is there any other business to come before the body tonight? Dr. Conti?
No, ma'am.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The chair votes aye, that's 4-0-0. You're going to vote aye? Okay, 5-0-0.